Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
On June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, the governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to the public health concerns. As head of this body, I have determined that an in-person meeting or meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. Prior to commencement of this meeting, all members of the body were verified that they can see and hear one another. A further finding the physical presence of the members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster. And more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an accessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Well, turn of arrangements have been allowed the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion, roll call, votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, and via Zoom teleconference. Notice that these arrangements have been given in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and as adapted by mayoral order. I, Mayor Richard Irvin, am physically present at our regular meeting locations defined by resolution R twenty dash one twenty-four. All votes shall be conducted by roll call, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Mr. Mohammed, you want to tell us who's going to be giving the pledge this evening?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tonight, we have special guests all the way from the North Pole, bringing us special pledges of allegiance. Please welcome Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. They'll lead us in the pledge. Go ahead.
Join us, Santa and the Pledge of Allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Santa and Mrs. Claus. We'll talk a little bit more about them and why they're with us tonight in just a minute. We'll turn it over now to older woman heartburns as we conclude this year with invocation.
God, you are good in all that you do. Even during this pandemic, God, you're still good. We thank you for the many holiday blessings that we all can receive and will receive. But we ask for God that you be with us as we make decisions that affect this city. We ask for God that you be with us. And as we continue to pray for those who have gone on, but Lord, we ask that you be with us and bless us individually, and then bless us collectively. We ask for God to look out each household that is represented on this night. Bless them, oh God. We are your humble servants. We have done the work that you told us to do. Now, Lord, as we get ready to vote in our last city council meeting of the year, we ask for God that you bless our household and all the viewers, all of Aurora residents. But those that have gone on, oh God, we ask you to give that family strength. We know that you can strengthen us, oh God. But we ask for God that you be with the minimum of our police and fire, those that have served and those that are serving. We ask for God that you be with the minimum of our military, oh God, those that are serving, those that are serving. We ask for God that you bless this meeting, bless the decision that we're going to make. We ask that you, in all, in your name. Thank you, God. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, older woman. Uh, Mayor, as we come into the Christmas and on Friday and just in the holiday season in general, including Hanukkah, heading into Kwanzaa and the new year, we feel that festive spirit throughout the city. And we just want to acknowledge our city staff today. We held what we call Holiday Hope, the food distribution. City served twenty-twenty where nearly a hundred city staff members came out to volunteer providing food for fifteen hundred residents, including a number of our aldermen who were with us today. Thank you so much, aldermen. We feel that energy all throughout with special events happening in different wards, from cooking giveaways and processionals out in Ward Eight and upcoming processionals in Ward Nine to food giveaways and awards throughout the city. But as we know throughout this year, we've had to pivot. Um, and we didn't have winter lights this year. We didn't have an opportunity for children to talk to Santa as they do the hundreds each year at that event. So we pivoted this year. And two of our amazing staff members who are here with us tonight, John Gerard and Dee Hockola, parents, you can turn the camera off now if kids are with you, but John Gerard and Dee Hockola, uh, who stepped up to the plate as we are hosting live video chats with Santa. So they are in here on the weekends. Well, I'm sorry, they're the North Pole on the weekend zooming in here, um, in the daytime and nighttime hours all throughout the week. By the time we conclude tomorrow, they would have met with over a hundred and seventy families on Zoom, taking Christmas wishes. If we could just give them a big round of applause. They've done an amazing job. Keep that applause going. We have a special presentation for them, and I'm going to turn it over to them.
Well, we wrote a song especially for this occasion, and we hope that you'll join us as we sing it. And when you hear E-I-E-I-O, we just would like you to join us if you're ready. And here we go. Santa and Mrs. Claus wish you well. E-I-E-I-O. And on this holiday, please stay safe. E-I-E-I-O. With a ho-ho here and a he-he there. Here he, there he, everywhere he he. We wish you a very, very holiday. E-I-E-I-O. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor.
This is John Gerard, Engineering Department. Of course, you know Johnny and Dee Hockola, Community Services. They've gone above and beyond, and we're so honored tonight to present them with the mayor's award of excellence for stepping up and going above and beyond as wonderful staff members. Holding that up to the camera.
Oh, my goodness.
Please welcome a round of applause to our wonderful man John.
Thank you so much. I won't tell you right now that Clayton is running around like a chicken with his head cut off.
Like, that's great, you know, because Clayton always does hard work to make sure that we do everything, you know, tip-top here in the city of Aurora. Thank you both for what, what you are doing for the city of Aurora and making so many of our young kids happy and smiled, you know, even during, as Alderman Hardburns pointed out, during these, uh, this pandemic and COVID, you guys have done well, you know. Ms. Hockola, Mr. Rogers makes sure, uh, that, uh, that, that our kids still have smiles on their face for, for Christmas and still get to see Santa and Mrs. Claus and still get to ask for their long lists. And I also want to personally thank all the, uh, our city employees that came out and volunteered in the hundreds today, uh, in our food giveaway to make sure our families had, have, have nourishment during the holiday season and make sure that they, you know, have, that their children, their families and them have food in their bellies and don't have to worry about where their next meal is going to come, come from, even though we're in this situation where, you know, many people don't have jobs and are wondering, are wondering, you know, where their next meal might, might be from. And I want to thank those aldermen that came out today and I, we all did shifts. I was out in one of the first shifts and in my shift, you know, I had Alderman Franco there. Thank you, Alderman Franco, being in my shift. Alderman Patty Smith was during my shift. Alderman Denell was, uh, was, was coming as I was going. We're, we're, we're trading shifts. And I'm sure a number of the other aldermen were out there, different shifts. Oh, Alderman Bug was there. He was coming, uh, as, as I was, as I was, as I was leaving to my shift. So thank you all of you, you know, for, for coming and participating and just making Aurora the best city we possibly can be during the holiday season and giving hope to, to our community. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We love Aurora.
We love you back, Ms. Claus.
Go get set up, and they have another session tomorrow. If any aldermen are interested in jumping on that session, it's full, but we'll make extra room for you to shoot me an email or text, and we'll send you the Zoom link. The kids have a good time with specialized songs and traditional songs and great Christmas wish lists. So thank you again to John Gerard, to Santa, Dee Hockola, as Mrs. Claus, making everyone smile. Thank you so much. Uh, and Mayor, my final presentation, as we share the screen, as we, uh, prepare to close out the year, uh, giving the updates as we always said we would for the change initiative, in particular, the civilian review board. As we know, here we go. As we know, um, we share with the community that tonight, December twenty-second, which is the, which was the deadline today at noon, uh, for the applications for the civilian review board, we would do much like we did two weeks ago and disclose all the names and some of the different demographics. A very popular board, as you probably saw the screen earlier, a hundred and thirty-four applicants for nine positions. You know, again, I can't stress enough that the importance of this and showing our commitment to reform and, and community engagement, a hundred and thirty-four applicants, and that was at the close of noon today. We know if we kept it open, it just would have continued to grow. Um, and what do, what do the applicants look like? Where do they come from? From a geographic area, there were three non-residents that applied. So there, of course, you have to be a resident of the city of Aurora, but we kept the numbers in for the sake of fidelity. But of the other, uh, a hundred and thirty-one, these are the wards that spread across with flat numbers, not percentages that you'll see in some of the other great demographics, but flat numbers across the boards with applicants from wards one through ten, a hundred and thirty-one, and then, of course, three non-residents. If we look at gender of those, number fifty-seven percent male, forty-one percent female, and the no response, you know, we, these are all voluntary categories that they could disclose as they complete the application, and two percent, uh, no response, three in total. You see the breakdown of male, female. When we look at ethnicity across the board, we see the break ground at forty-five percent Caucasian, twenty-three percent black, nineteen percent Latinx, um, four percent of the other category, uh, whatever they collect in other, three percent Asian Pacific Islander, one percent American Indian, and again, voluntary information, uh, no response, uh, for five percent of the applicants. So we see across the board where, uh, community is represented. Uh, the names as we go through, and I'm going to go through these screens because we know it's live on social media, people can always rewind and look at it. But for the sake of full disclosure, these are the names, last names A through B. I'm going to leave each screen up for ten seconds. Last names C and D. Last names E through G. Last names H through J. Last names K through L. Last names M through O. We see a double in there. We'll pull that in. Last names P through S. And finally, last names T through Z. And just as two weeks ago, aldermen, we'll pull this and email this to you, uh, with some additional information added through next week. Where do we go from here? Still, information, of course, is up on the CRB and its own website, uh, but we take the time now to, through the mayor's, uh, purview and office to look at narrowing it down to finalists. It'll bring those finalists to the committee of the whole on Tuesday, January fifth, a couple of weeks out. There'll be an interview period of, uh, of, of ten days or so, um, where we'll interview the finalists, the mayor, uh, we'll interview them via Zoom, and then propose CRB members, the proposed nine inaugural members, uh, to the rap committee, uh, Tuesday, January nineteenth, right after King Weekend. Mayor, that concludes the update on the CRB and the change reform initiative. We'll have many more updates in January as so many other things are unfolding and progressing, very exciting, actually, uh, as we continue to progress and move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And that concludes presentations.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's go on to public comment. Madam clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, when you read the, uh, rules for public comment, please, ma'am.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person's recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Nicole Mullins.
Ms. Mullins, can you hear the sound of my voice?
Yes.
Ms. Mullins. All right, Ms. Mullins, you are going to have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Okay, hello, my name is Nicole Mullins, and I'm on the board for Culture Stock. We have been trying to gain city support unsuccessfully for several months now to reopen our bookstore and community art center for the residents of Aurora. Most recently was our grant application submission for the city's Quality of Life Grant. We received an email letter from city staff today informing us that we will not be recommended, um, for approval from city council. So I'm speaking before you today to urge you, city council members, to reconsider that decision and to support a community art center that is accessible to all members of the community of Aurora. Also, I would like to speak to members of the community. Through the years, and especially after we had to close our doors, I heard stories about how much Culture Stock made an impact on people's lives. So I urge you to contact your alderperson and the alderman at large and share those stories with them. Share with them why it's so important that the community has equitable access to space and creative programs and events that are free without the expectation of a monetary fee. If the city doesn't see the value in the work that we do and in the opportunities that we offer, please call and write them and make them see Culture Stock's importance through your eyes. Thank you.
Madam clerk, do you have any additional speakers?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's go on to the next section of the agenda. Next, we'll hear both the consent agenda and the direct to cons, to council consent agenda together in full. Will the clerk now please read both agendas in full?
Twenty dash zero one two-two, a resolution adopting a complete streets policy. Twenty dash zero four seven-two, an ordinance amending chapter forty-three of the Code of Ordinances, city of Aurora, Illinois, commonly known as the subdivision control ordinance. Twenty dash zero six three eight, a resolution to approve the renewal of the contracts for city website hosting and maintenance, as well as website job applicant tracking module from Civic Plus Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred forty dollars and eighty-four cents for a period of three years. Twenty dash zero seven one six, a resolution authorizing the execution of a local public agency agreement for federal participation with the state of Illinois, the execution of a Phase Three construction engineering agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited, in the not-to-exceed amount of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars in the appropriation of one hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars of motor fuel tax funds for the Agilon Drive Bike Way Project. Twenty dash zero seven one seven, a resolution to approve the acceptance of a donation agreement with the American Phil Helens Society for installation of a commemorative monument at Wilder Park. Twenty dash zero seven one eight, an ordinance amending ordinance number three one zero zero being the Aurora zoning ordinance and the zoning map attached thereto by rezoning property located at fourteen eighty Reckinger Road from R five S Multiple Family Dwelling District, with a special use to Park and Recreation District with a special use. Twenty dash zero seven one nine, an ordinance requesting approval of a special use for an educational services use located at fourteen eighty Reckinger Road. Twenty dash zero seven two zero, a resolution.
Do me a favor, clerk, and scroll up so we can see what's on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you. A resolution approving a final plan located at fourteen eighty Reckinger Road for an educational services use. Twenty dash zero seven three four, a resolution awarding contracts to supply processed chemicals for the water production division. Twenty dash zero seven six seven, an ordinance approving a res, a revision to the Orchard Gateway Corporate Center Plan description on five point nine eight acres for the property located at twenty-six fifty-five Orchard Gateway Road. Twenty dash zero seven eight eight, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class B on-site consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from IJS Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Taqueria Los Camalees, number thirteen. Twenty dash zero seven eight nine, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a boundary agreement between the city of Aurora and the village of North Aurora. Twenty dash zero seven nine seven, a resolution accepting the contract agreement with Oswego Animal Hospital Oswego, Illinois, for veterinary and spay neuter services for animal care and control. Twenty dash zero eight one zero, resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Dan Showman Incorporated for Government Affairs Consulting Services. Twenty dash zero eight one three, a resolution superseding all previous resolutions pertaining to and amending salary and benefit plans for employees and the non-exempt pay plan. Twenty dash zero eight one five, a resolution requesting approval to award RFQ twenty dash twenty-eight Managed Security Services to Data Defenders LLC, one eleven West Jackson Boulevard, Suite seventeen hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh four, for a managed security service to reduce cybersecurity risks, protect city systems and assets, and prepare for future cyber risks. Total contract amount not to exceed one million, six hundred thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars over a five-year contract. Twenty dash zero eight one seven, a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Nicola Bello of Vision MAI LLC for Government Affairs Consulting Services. Twenty dash zero eight one eight, a resolution awarding Griffin and Strong the contract to conduct an availability and disparity study on behalf of the city of Aurora. Twenty dash zero eight two eight, a resolution to accept quotes from Ellis Systems Walter Group LLC, four ninety West North Frontage Road, Bullingburg, Illinois, six oh four four oh, to purchase handgun storage expansions, shelving, long gun expansion shelving, reconfiguration shelving, and bulk storage expansion and reconfiguration for the Aurora Police Department. Twenty dash zero two two six, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at the northeast corner of Liberty Street and Sartor Avenue. Twenty dash zero two two seven, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at eighteen seventy-five Plain Avenue. Twenty dash zero seven six six, a resolution accepting the dedication of right-of-way for the property located at four-ten Hill Avenue. Twenty dash zero eight three two, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, December eighth, twenty-twenty city council meeting. Twenty dash zero eight six seven, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, December fifteenth, twenty-twenty special city council meeting.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Hardburn, for we entertain those motions. Are there any questions or motions? You remove any items, whether direct to council consent agenda or the consent agenda? Alderman Messiakos.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to remove items twenty dash zero seven one eight, zero seven one nine, and zero seven two zero. Secretary, accuse myself of voting.
Clerk, can you note that those items will be removed from consent agenda for the purpose of Alderman Messiakos recusing himself? And based on the fact that he is recusing himself, they will not stay on consent?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other motions to remove items from the consent agenda? There being none, there being a, uh, motion and a second to approve items, but less the ones that have been removed by Alderman Messiakos. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas? Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lache?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Levinas?
Motion carries a consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to unfinished business. Clerk, can you read the first item under unfinished business?
Twenty dash zero six five two, a resolution approving a revision to the preliminary plat and plan for the property located at the southwest corner of Butterfield Road and North Farnsworth Avenue.
So, there's been a motion by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderman Garza. Questions or discussions on this resolution? Mayor? Alderman Loft.
Yeah, so, well, I have got a bunch of calls that, uh, there is going to cause extra truck traffic. We know that, but the question is how much? I heard it's going to go from twelve thousand gallons to seventy or eighty thousand, so I'm thinking that's six times the normal route. I, I just, I don't know, we're in a financial situation problem, so, uh, I don't know if anybody else has heard from residents, but, uh, maybe there's somebody on from the developers to talk about, can trucks get off the highway and go north and then get to it? I mean, assume they can go north to Butterfield, go west to Butterfield, and then get there. That's a question that I would have.
Mr. Mayor, Ed Seben, zoning director, uh, I could answer part of that. Uh, I believe, though, the developers are on, uh, Dan Saltis, uh, maybe could answer that, but, uh, as far as truck access to the diesel pumps, uh, there's only access uh, southbound on Farnsworth into the site and then southbound exiting the site. You cannot access the site northbound on Farnsworth. And, uh, I don't know, uh, Dan Saltis is available that could, uh, expound on that?
Let me, before, uh, we have Mr. Feltes on, Mr. Stevens, this is not Alderman Loft's ward, actually. This is Alderman Yamas's ward, and he's actually the one that put it on unfinished. So did you have the opportunity to speak with Alderman Yamas, who is unable to be on this particular meeting to address any issues that he might have?
Uh, Mayor, I did reach out to Alderman Yamas, uh, via email, but I had not heard back from him as of this meeting.
All right. And Mr. Feltes? Is there, is Mr. Feltes on? Mr. Stevens?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Hi, um, this is Todd Abrams from WT Group. I'm on the line as well with Dan Saltis. Uh, I'm actually the civil engineer, uh, on the project. Um, traditionally, when, um, looking at traffic created by, by sites such as this, um, we, gas stations typically consider, considered a siphon use, um, not a destination use. So when actually creating, uh, traffic impacts, um, typical traffic engineers don't anticipate increase in traffic, uh, as a result of, of, of an addition like this. Um, essentially, the development counts on pulling traffic that, that already exists, um, from, from the, uh, from the current traffic load. So we really don't anticipate traffic increases, uh, as a result of the addition of the, um, of the diesel canopy.
Just, this is Dan Saltis of Chima Developers. Just to extend on that, as, as Alderman Loft had mentioned, um, we do have one pump right now on that site that does provide diesel to, uh, to local trucks. Those local trucks, uh, you know, varying sizes, uh, construction trucks, uh, trailers, landscape trucks, uh, twenty footers, thirty footers, forty footers. I mean, the site is a large site. It, it does accommodate for, for large trucks now. So as, as Todd had mentioned, we're just anticipating catching the local traffic, the southbound, the eastbound Butterfield, easy in, easy out, hire a quicker and hu, um, faster high-flow dispensers to get the trucks in and out. And, um, as mentioned, we do anticipate a, a bump in the diesel because we're offering more dispensers. Um, that's just part of the math and, and adding, you know, a quicker, uh, queuing and routes. Um, just to put it in perspective as well, um, we do do about ten thousand gallons of fuel, uh, a month here. Um, one of our, we have, we're trying to add diesel in many of our locations. We, we have one, a diesel canopy in Carroll Stream that's under construction now. We're doing one in Villa Park later this year, or next year, I'm sorry. Um, all the new sites that we've, that we've built in the last couple of years, we've added separate diesel canopies. So it's, it's an important offer to, to the existing Pride location that we've owned for about ten years and have upgraded. Um, so at this point right now, like I said, it's a, it's an important offer. And, um, you know, the retail center is a, it's an extension of that as well. We, we haven't changed anything with the retail center. We, we wanted to add a, uh, we have outdoor seating on the west end cap. We want to add it a, a fine dining or a, a, a sit-down restaurant of some sort. Uh, like a, uh, um, like a beer tavern, things like that. On the east side, more of a drive-through type quick-service restaurant.
All right, so, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Saltis, um, Mr. Stevens, or anybody from the mayor's office, have they actually spoken with Alderman Loft to determine what his issues are and whether those issues have been addressed in the conversation? Anybody from the, the mayor's office, Alderman's office, or Mr. Stevens?
Uh, I have not spoken with Alderman Loft before tonight.
Um, Mr. Alexandria or Mr. Nelson, if Mr. Nelson's on, has anyone spoken with Alderman? Uh, I, and I wish he was on, on, on the line. I know there's been, uh, emergencies that kept him away from this particular meeting until a little bit later. But have we spoken with? But have we spoken with Alderman Loff to determine what his issues are based on it being his ward?
I have not, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I I know that staff had talked to Alderman Yamas because he was the one that had asked to put it on unfinished, but I have not spoken to Alderman Loff.
Alderman Yamas. Alderman Loff, do you have any additional questions?
No, I I believe I did reach out to Mr. Saltis and I believe he said that he needed the additional revenue to be able to build the strip center and he is gonna try and get a sit down restaurant, which is what the neighbors want. And if the traffic engineer said it's not going to increase traffic.
So my question to you is, do you have any more questions?
No, I'm good.
All right. So no further questions. Alderman Buck?
Yeah, since I believe Alderman Lamas, I know he had a family situation. I believe he's going to be on this meeting later. Uh, if we could move this to the end of our agenda, uh, new items, he could come on, I think it'd be inappropriate for us to um, take a vote if he had questions. Um, if we could just delay this twenty minutes.
You know, that's not unreasonable request. Clerk, will you just please, even though we've discussed this item, hold this item twenty dash zero six five two until the end of unfinished business? And hopefully, Mr. Alderman Loff will be on by then. If not, we'll just
Lamas.
Alderman Yamas will be on by then. If not, then then we will make a vote on it, but we'll hold this item until the last item in unfinished business. Clerk, can you read the next item in unfinished business?
Twenty dash zero six five three, an ordinance establishing a special use plan development at the southwest corner of Butterfield Road and North Farnsworth Avenue to be incorporated under the existing PAS Plaza Plan description and the Aurora zoning ordinance and the zoning map attached to an underlying zoning of B two S general retail district and OS one S conservation, open space and drainage district.
May I ask a question, Mr. Seben? Does this item correspond, go along with item twenty zero two zero dash zero six five two?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor.
We'll hold that one to the end of unfinished business as well. Clerk, can you read the next item under unfinished business?
Twenty dash zero seven six four, an ordinance approving a revision to the plan description on four point three five five acres for the property located at four ten Hill Avenue.
Fomo.
Second. There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Questions or discussion? There being no questions, discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman Lache?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
Motion carries the ordinance is adopted. Can you read the next item under unfinished business?
Twenty dash zero six seven five, a resolution approving a revision to the final plan for the property located at four ten Hill Avenue for mini storage, common corridor units, three three four two use and a vehicle terminals and vehicle storage yards, major three three one zero use.
Fomo.
Second.
There's a motion made by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on this item? Questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Man Buck?
Yes.
Alderman Lache?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
Motion carries the resolution is approved. Clerk, will you?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Alderman Franco.
Can I interrupt just for one second? I believe Alderman Yamas will be on here shortly to go over those items that we pushed back. So we, he will be on, trying to, you know, talk about that soon. So just so you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
That item passed, resolution approved. Clerk, can you read the next item under unfinished business?
Twenty dash zero eight one two, a resolution superseding all previous resolutions pertaining to an amending salary and benefit plans for employees and the executive pay plan.
Fomo.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Garza. Questions or discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Alderman Loff.
Yep. So the reason I asked this to be unfinished is the, I would like to see, you know, new people that are hired not get fifteen weeks severance when they retire. And I know that other Alderman or maybe just Alderman Jenkins said that, you know, we have to keep up with the private sector, but I asked a lot of people and a lot of HR people, and I don't know anyone who gets the benefits, the pension and fifteen week severance when they retire. I just think it's excessive and with pandemic, if we could apply it to new people, I don't want to take anything away from people, but that's why I asked for this to be unfinished. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Alderman Franco.
Do we know if fifteen, was it fifteen week severance is standard or not?
Miss, uh, Ms. Lewis?
Yeah. Uh, I don't know if it's standard or not. Uh, it is, it's a standard for the city of Aurora. In fact, we have reduced the amount of severance we give our executive employees several years ago. Um, but we still find that it is a it's a good incentive to recruit and, uh, you know, marketing, get good qualified candidates. It's a reward for work well done. Um, and but I do not have a comparison to other municipalities. Each municipality has their own benefits and their own plans. And so what might be something we're doing with Aurora and other municipality potentially have bonuses? You know, there are some organizations that through their performance plan uh, can give additional monies and incentives, you know, during the performance the annually, which we do not have. So again, this is a way to um, recognize work well done. We have reduced it, but at the same time trying to it based on mitigating, you know, costs to the city. So we do recognize that. Um, but still maintaining some type of incentive to get good people.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Alderman Loff.
So, Mr. Lewis, can you clarify? We did reduce it, I think, from twenty five weeks, half a year to fifteen weeks, but doesn't that fifteen week payment they would get now go to their pension? So when they average the thirty six months, it bumps up their pension accordingly?
It would go to the bottom line of payout, yes.
Is there any way to not have that bump it up?
That would be something I'd have to look at closer. Yeah, I I don't know that that we would be able to do that. Marty might speak more to the the pension side.
Hold on a second. Hold on, Mr. Lyons. Alderman Buck?
Yeah, I just want to add in another factor in the in the private sector is many times HR departments in the private sector have the ability to negotiate early retirements with large severage packages. Um, and municipalities' HRs really don't have that type of ability to do those things. So we have it as a set thing for all people coming out. Um, you don't hear of balloon packages in a municipality setting. You hear about that all the time in the private sector. So I think that is part of the the compensation or the really what we're looking to to do for our employees.
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion and a second, um, and ample questions and discussion. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
You're on mute, Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman Lache?
No.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven one.
Motion carries the resolution is approved. Clerk, can you read the next item under new business?
Twenty dash zero eight.
I'm sorry, unfinished business.
Twenty eight, twenty dash zero eight two zero, an ordinance amending O twenty dash zero four five granting additional time for compliance of the special use for a cannabis dispensing facility at fourteen fifteen Corporate Boulevard that was granted on eighth twenty twenty.
Fomo.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Questions or discussion regarding this item? Questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman Lache?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
No.
Eleven one.
Motion carries the ordinance is adopted. Clerk, can you return to the items concerning the first ward and Alderman Yamas that we went over, so Alderman Yamas can participate in the conversation?
Yes.
Read that first item.
Twenty dash zero six five two, a resolution approving a revision to the preliminary plat and plan for the property located at the southwest corner of Butterfield Road and North Farnsworth Avenue.
Alderman Yamas has already been a motion second on this and discussion. We didn't want to go forward until your questions were asked, given the fact that this is your ward and you put this on unfinished. Uh, can you, um, uh, see, answer whether or not you have your questions or or concerns have been answered?
Well, first, thank you for passing this and until I was able to participate. I do appreciate that. My answers, I'm sorry, my questions from the committee, the whole meeting were answered. Uh, but my constituents still just have a general opposition to an increased traffic of semi truck trailers on Farnsworth and especially there near that intersection. So we'll still have to vote no on this.
Understandable. Before, but Alderman Yamas, you were not on when we had someone from uh, our department explain that there would not be any additional uh, traffic based on the fact that uh, these additional tanks were added. So if you could repeat that, Mr. Was it Mr. Saltis or someone else from 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 our from our department that?
I believe it was Mr. Saltis or his assistant.
Go ahead.
Yes, Todd Abrams with WT Group, WT Civil Engineering, the civil engineer on the project. Um, traditionally, when modeling traffic um, impacts and and traffic studies, uh, gas stations are considered a siphoning use. Um, so typically it's it's modeled as no increase to traffic because traffic is taken from, uh, from it's essentially a siphon. Um, that's why it's called the siphon use, but traffic is taken from the roadway. Um, it's not a destination, for instance, like a, um, a a quick serve restaurant, um, or a or a bank facility. Those are, those are developments that create traffic. Gas stations, uh, and the way engineers model is they don't consider there to be an increase in traffic because it essentially takes traffic from the road that currently currently exists.
Um, Alderman, obviously you have any questions for based on that statement?
Well, in in this case, because, you know, we've been describing it as a truck stop, wouldn't that be a destination for truckers?
I, this is Dan Saltis from Chima Developers. I know that it was defined as a truck stop early on. And I kind of questioned it as well, but the answer I was getting from the planning department was, well, that was just how they defined it in the ordinance. So to to answer that, there are no truck parking stalls on this plan. There's no intent to have the the trucks park other than fueling up and a quick grab and go into the convenience store and back and out. There's no extra facilities. There's no extra, there's no extra larger washrooms or anything of that sort. So technically, it's not a truck stop um, by by that definition. And and once again, this is, this would probably be our seventh site that would have a diesel offer similar to this.
Mm hmm. Okay, well, thanks. I appreciate the clarification, but even if it's not a full fledged truck stop, I think, um, you know, any risk that it might be a destination for truckers is something that I'm just not comfortable with and my constituents, you know, wouldn't appreciate either. But I I do appreciate your those, your clarification.
I understand. Alderman Franco?
Yeah, I just want to clarify here because I do get questions like that quite a bit in my ward when new developments come. But it's typically in conjunction with, is it going to come down my street, the side streets, the smaller arterial streets as opposed to like Orchard Road. So we're not talking about truck traffic going into neighborhoods at all, are we? Or this is just staying on the main drags like Farnsworth and such? Is that what we're talking about here?
That's, that's, that's the intent. Yes, correct.
Right, because we're not going to let trucks go through neighborhoods all of a sudden with this, right? That's that's not something that's going to happen, correct?
No, we no, that's not the intent.
Okay, all right.
All right, um, there's been a mo- Alderman Denal?
I I just wanted to add one thing for Alderman Yamas. I don't know that was talked about on our second go around. Um, there is no provision for people to exit on Farnsworth, go north and go into the gas station. Uh, those traffic movements will be prohibited. So it'll only be folks coming from the, I mean, for me, that was helpful to know that the trucks would not be able to cut across the lanes of traffic and and create problems that way. So I just wanted to offer that.
All right, um, with no further, there's been a motion, a second already with no further questions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
No.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman Lache?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Ten two.
Motion carries the resolution is approved. Clerk, can you read the next item that we held for Alderman Yamas?
Twenty sorry, twenty dash zero six five three, an ordinance establishing a special use plan development at the southwest corner of Butterfield Road and North Farnsworth Avenue to be incorporated under the existing PAS Plaza Plan description and the Aurora zoning ordinance and the zoning map attached to an underlying zoning of B two S general retail district and OS one S conservation, open space and drainage district.
There's already, Alderman Yamas, been a motion and a second on this. Did you have any additional questions? As this item is associated with the previous item that you commented on?
When it ordered.
Alderman, Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman O'Connor, go ahead.
I think this one, it was just held. I don't think we moved.
Right. Wasn't a motion.
There was no motion, I'm sorry. Well, then, uh, this was not, there was no motion on this one, I'm sorry. Uh, may I entertain a motion on twenty dash zero six five three?
Fomo.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. Thank you for pointing that out for us, Alderman O'Connor. Um, uh, any questions or discussion on this item? As this item is associated directly with twenty dash zero six five two. Alderman Yamas?
No, I don't have any additional questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions from any other Aldermen on this item? There being no questions, a first motion and a second to approve. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
No.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yeah.
Alderman Lache?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven one.
Motion carries the ordinance is adopted. Now, clerk, if I'm not mistaken, that concludes unfinished business. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go on to new businesses or motion to suspend the rule.
Mr. Mayor, there were the three items that were removed from the consent agenda at the request of Alderman Messiakos.
Apologize. Absolutely. The three items removed from the consent agenda for Alderman Messiakos because he has a conflict. Thank you, uh, counsel. Did you identify those items off the consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
Do have them, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Would you like me to read them?
Please do. So we can vote.
Twenty dash zero seven one eight, an ordinance amending ordinance number three one zero zero being the Aurora zoning ordinance and the zoning map attached thereto by rezoning property located An ordinance amending ordinance number three one zero zero being the Aurora zoning ordinance and the zoning map attached thereto by rezoning property located at fourteen eighty Reckinger Road from R five S Multiple Family Dwelling District with a special use to PS Park and recreational district with a special use.
Some move.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Franco, second of Alderman Jenkins. Any question, discussions on this item? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
He abstains from this.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
Motion carries, is approved.
And Mr. Mayor, the roll call should reflect no voting by Alderman Masiacos as opposed to an extension.
Please allow Madam Clerk that um, Masiacos did not vote at all as he's already determined that uh, there's a conflict and uh, he was not going to vote on this, so.
Yes.
Next item of the three.
Twenty dash zero seven one nine, ordinance requesting approval of special use for an educational services use located at fourteen eighty Reckinger Road.
Some move.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Seville, second of Alderman Jenkins. Question or discussions on this item? Hmm, with no questions or discussion? Clerk, will you call the roll on this? Recognizing that we, there's no need to call on Alderman Masiacos.
Yes, sir. Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
Motion carries, item is approved. Final item?
Twenty dash zero seven two zero, resolution approving the final plan located at fourteen eighty Reckinger Road for an educational services use.
Some move.
Motion by Alderman Hartburn, second of Alderman Jenkins. Any questions or discussion on this item? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to new business. Uh, is there a motion to spend the rules to consider?
Some move.
There's an Alderman Hartburn, second of Alderman Jenkins. Uh, will clerk, please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve A's.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under new business?
Twenty dash zero eight four eight, a resolution amending the maintenance agreement with Integraf Hexagon Corporation of Huntsville, Alabama for compliance with mandatory state police reporting requirement.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Seville, second of Alderman Jenkins. Any questions or discussion on this item? Questions or discussion on the Hexagon item? There being no questions? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve A's.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. I'm clerk, read the next item under new business.
Twenty dash zero eight five zero, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Public Health for the use of various city-owned properties to operate a temporary COVID nineteen testing facility.
Some move.
Second.
There's an emotion made by Alderman Hartburn, second of Alderman Franco. Questions or discussion on this item? There being no question, discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve A's.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Read the next item for new business.
Twenty dash zero eight five one, a resolution authorizing FH Passion, SN Nielsen and Associates LLC to replace the Aurora Police Department Southwest Gate using Fence Masters Incorporated through the City of Aurora's Job Order Contracting Program for fifty five thousand five hundred forty four dollars and ninety five cents plus a contingency amount of five thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and forty nine cents.
Some move.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburn, second of Alderman Franco. Questions or discussion on this item? Question or discussions on this item? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve A's.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Next item, clerk.
Twenty dash zero eight six two, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aurora and the Board of Education of West Aurora School District one twenty nine involving the conveyance renovation and beneficial reuse of the Todd and Lincoln School properties.
Some move.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburn, second of Alderman Franco. Questions or discussion on this item? Alderman Donnell?
Uh, Mayor, could we have a brief presentation on this item since we didn't see it at COW?
Mr. Alexandra.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm joined by uh, Mr. Debo. Um, in a nutshell, this uh, project actually and proposal emanated from the twenty nineteen attempt and passage of an MOU uh, to collaborate with school district one twenty nine on the future of Todd School. And at the time, the council passed an MOU uh, where the attempt was to uh, simultaneously redevelop Todd School and provide the school district with a centralized location for their student support services that they um, were looking to um, consolidate and offer to the um, students and families of the district. Uh, unfortunately, we're unable to get that RDA done, but we did not stop working and collaborating with the school district since then. Uh, we've worked closely with leadership to figure out a mutually beneficial plan. Um, in hindsight, um, it perhaps was a silver lining in that both um, the district was able to sort of refine and sharpen the pencil on their plans. Uh, turns out, they didn't need five thousand square feet. They're fine with a thirty five hundred square foot uh, facility carved out of Todd School. Um, and in turn, we had further discussions about Lincoln School and adding Lincoln to the Todd um, potential conveyance through an IGA. The end result would be uh, a two-step or three-step process because this would involve ultimately bringing back two separate RDAs. Uh, but the IGA step we're at now is to allow the city to facilitate uh, and act as a pass-through uh, to have the properties conveyed from the school district to us. Um, it's the easiest path. Uh, the school district under school laws have uh, constraints on property disposition, except when they can work out an agreement to convey to another uh, governmental unit like us, and we've done this successfully in the past. Uh, so here, the goal is um, a number of benefits long-term. Um, in conveying these two properties to the city, we would work and we've been working in conjunction, exploring different uh, beneficial end uses uh, with developers. Um, we've settled on um, workforce housing. And I'll explain that, and Mr. Debo and I will explain that in a sec. Um, but the school district in return would get space they need for their student support uh, centralized service location. The city in return would put two properties on the tax rolls. Uh, Lincoln, I believe was from eighteen sixty-two. I think that was confirmed by historian, noted Lincoln historian uh, Alderman O'Connor earlier today. Um, and since eighteen sixty-two.
Not that, not that he was there then.
No, absolutely. I was not inferring that in the least.
Short shortly after that.
But but um, since eighteen sixty-two, that served this community honorably uh, as a school property, not on the tax rolls, as did Todd. And kudos to the school district. They were wonderful stewards of both these facilities. And even though Lincoln has been closed for a while and Todd not so long, both are in in very good condition for their age. And over the last uh, however many months, uh, developers, they have um, gotten great compliance and cooperation by the district to show them the facilities, give them the plans and start working things out so that uh, early in the year, we'll be able to hit the ground running and bring back to the council, you know, two RDAs, one for Todd, one for Lincoln. Um, the housing objective. We all on this call, the last number of years have worked very hard to attract and implement housing that meets the needs of our community, that looks like our community. And uh, we've, we've had wonderful, successful luxury housing in Aurora. Market rate uh, both past and ones that are in progress as we speak. Um, we have the Aurora Housing Authority which which does an excellent job, meeting the needs of um, of folks in Aurora. But this particular um, proposed type that you will see more in detail um, early in twenty-one, but I can say the workforce housing fills a gap for those working individuals and families who maybe make a little too much to qualify for the direct assistance of of uh, what they would call low income housing, but they don't make quite enough to go into market rate. And the last thing I'll say is recently, we've been so successful and I'm so thankful and so is our staff that with your council support, the mayor's support, we've attracted new businesses throughout the pandemic and to Aurora. Lindsay Windows, Factor um, and more coming, uh, restaurants in the downtown. We'd like those employees to have a shot and availability of housing that meets their needs and they can live in Aurora. And hopefully, with the assistance of the Financial Empowerment Center and other local not-for-profits and efforts, that they may have a pathway to homeownership um, in Aurora. So we're very excited about this opportunity. It could also be attractive to entry-level school district employees, not just of one twenty-nine, but all of our districts. And if you look strategically, and that's why I think we, we put on there the two exhibits showing Lincoln and Todd, their proximity to the downtown is is terrific, plus their accessibility, walking distance, access to transit. Uh, makes it uh, the ideal candidates uh, for somebody to come in, preserve these historic buildings. Uh, I had a terrific conversation with Alderman Seville who even back in twenty nineteen was a champion for the historic preservation of the uh, historic mural elements and the statues in Todd. Those along with the school district, we're making those condition number one, that they have to be preserved or preserved in place and have some level of um, uh, guarantee of not only their restoration, but their longevity and preservation. So um, uh, that's the type of uh, process, a project we're envisioning here. Um, in January, we hope to come back with uh, more detail on RDAs. Uh, there's also um, significant consideration for historic and other tax credits uh, that these projects would fit into, including river edge tax zone. Uh, maybe I'm getting a little bit too much into the weeds and into Mr. Debo's territory. But there's opportunity knocking here for us and there is a little bit of a time element. The school district is looking to approve their share of the IGA uh, the first week of January. And uh, we're also monitoring uh, the developments along uh, with IDA, the state agency, and when they're going to be meeting. So we'd like to be ready to roll. And the school district would love to have their condo space uh, started maybe in the fall of twenty-one and occupancy in the beginning of twenty-two.
Mr. Debo?
Um, it's pretty comprehensive. I'm available for questions uh, for many, but I, but I, I don't have anything more to add for that. Good presentation. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Alderman Donnell?
Um, Mayor, I just wanted to say that uh, um, the, the Lincoln School, the Todd, we understand, uh, we've been working on that for a long time. Lincoln School is a beautiful historic building that I would very much like to have repurposed, been vacant for a number of years. I know that that at this point with the IGA, the details that that I'd like to have uh, aren't appropriate, but in the RDA, I want to work closely with staff to make sure that what we do here is going to be an asset to our community uh, for years to come. So uh, while this has moved fairly quickly, uh, I will support it tonight.
Alderman Smith, thank you, Mr. Alderman Smith?
Uh, yeah, I'm just wondering why this didn't come through COW. Did I miss something? And I'm, I'm, I'm.
Well, Alderman, it it's, it was really a matter of timing. Um, we weren't quite at the point where we could have gotten it into our regular cycle. But again, given the time constraint and, you know, the scheduling of the special finance meeting, you know, I g- I was able to put it on as quickly as possible. We did have some other things ahead of it as well, like our budget and and some other things, but um, again, I tried to give the councils a heads up as soon as I could um, and give as much detail in the memo. Uh, but also again, knowing that we had the finance committee before this and we'd have some time here today to talk about it. Uh, it it really was just a, a, we're, we're a victim of too many things going on and not enough uh, scheduled meetings, but that that's really the explanation.
And can I ask one more question?
Alderman.
What um, how are we assured um, that this uh, type of housing will not fall um, into hut housing? How do we know we're going to stay at the level in which you are explaining to us?
That's a great question, and the way the process works as it worked for St. Charles Hospital and as it worked for the the uh, artisan lofts, the specific developer will apply for this specific type of program that has specific binding requirements. So you cannot start out and receive these tax credits and other funding starting out this way and then flip to something else. Uh, that's prohibited. It's heavily regulated, especially at the state level. And the projects that we've had in town that are in this category have not only been tremendously successful, but but they comply. And we've had zero um, complaints or concerns from the state about how they're operating. And so that would be the commitment and the expectation, and that would be laid out also in the RDA, but it's something that we don't enforce. The state does because there's state tax credits and other related benefits that flow directly from the state to the development and they run with the development, so to speak.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for that time.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to um, um, thank Alex Alexandro for reaching out to me the other day and telling me that this was uh, coming down and I had an opportunity to share um, with him uh, some of the concerns that he voiced tonight. And I just want to reiterate what those concerns are for the council. Uh, there are currently thirteen WPA murals and two statues in Todd School. And there's a feeling amongst the art community uh, that there could very well be WPA murals that have been covered up at Lincoln School. So my concern So my concern that we have qualified people involved with the restoration of these murals and the investigation of any other murals at Lincoln School and that the city undertakes a vetting process by anyone that is being hired to restore these murals because not everyone has the qualifications and skills be able to do that. And then ultimately, that these beautiful pieces of art can be shown publicly for the community to enjoy it rather than be hidden. It's my concern that the future that we find good stewards of this public art that so everybody can enjoy it in throughout the community. So again, thanks, Alex, for reaching out to me.
You're welcome. And I think also, as I told you, Alderman Seville, in twenty nineteen, I learned a lot about the WPA and history and these murals and, and especially the history and background of the two statues. So I'm confident based on the contacts that we made during that discussion and the conversations with the school district. Again, the school also has in their possession, I think, as you recall, some relics and, and murals from other schools that are no longer with us. And so I think we have also an opportunity here to, to have a maybe longer-term, larger perspective discussion next year about the totality of that whole process because they are historic. They do reflect a, a, a time and place. And we certainly don't want to cover them up or destroy them. So I think I appreciate you bringing that up and being so diligent on that, but we will factor that in as well.
Thank you, Alex.
Alderman Lochee.
Yep. So Alex, I have a question. So you said you're going to be coming back in maybe January, February with an RDA. So do you have buyers already? Or is this something you're going to go out to the public and then so?
Alderman Lochee, we're not selling the property. We would be working out, you know, the, the school district will be conveying to us because they can, right? And then the RDA will lay out with the agreement of the school district, the terms and conditions of redeveloping both properties. And then at some point, there will be a conveyance, but subject to them fulfilling all the conditions of the RDA as well as the ultimate housing determination and what they qualify for and what they're held to. So we, over the last, I would say, Devo, what, six months or so? There've been a number of folks that have got, gone through. The school district brought some, we brought some. So it was more of an exploratory due diligence type vetting. And that's where I mentioned earlier, the school district was super cooperative. You know, they have an equivalent position to Mr. Burchall. Although I am partial to Mr. Burchall, the school district fellow did a great job, very responsive, showed the bones of both buildings, history, you know, the age of some of the, the infrastructure roofs and, and boilers and that. And so again, we're going to be the facilitators here, but getting a, a solid RDA that accomplishes those original objectives that I talked about earlier.
But, but we're going to have to maintain them. So are they at least in decent shape? So it-
They're in, they're in very good shape. We actually very minimal maintenance. And we don't expect to have them for very long.
Okay.
Can I mention to Alderman Seville, if I can? Again, there's a lot of detail that's going to come with these RDAs. But I believe that they will also fall into a historic designation, which is really, you know, on the National Register of Historic Places, and then that gets executed by the state. So they're really, just to assure you, there will be national and state experts overseeing this to verify because you're not going to be able to get that, can't get those tax credits and on the historic side, not on anything for workforce housing. So this might be a double tax credit, which are the kind of dollars you need to, to renovate these buildings, which obviously could be pretty expensive. The other thing is you'll, you'll have two, so you'll have a little bit of an economies of scale there. But what happens is you have very strict guidelines in terms of, you know, you took a look at Hobbs or any one of those very strict guidelines of what you could do and you can't do. So when it comes to those murals, I gotta believe that somebody's going to be watching very closely.
Right. And I also believe just one last point that, you know, if, if we, as my mother used to say, if we all begin with the end in mind sometimes, we look at how some of our historic buildings have been reused and repurposed currently. St. Charles Hospital. What an elegant place to live in. Dignity. The Stope Island Social House. In fact, because of what Mr. Devo just said, one of the inspectors I recall from some federal agency was the one that said, no, no, no. You can't cover up those historic windows. If you recall those windows that are at the top of the, the wall facing out. And so those actually are a distinctive feature of that building. So we envision the same caliber of restoration and incorporation into both of these buildings long-term, just like what we're expecting out at Copley with the historic buildings that are part of the Copley campus. So we think this is a continuation of a trend. But we get to fill a much-needed gap in our housing spectrum and at the same time honor the past, put these properties on, on the tax, I keep wanting to say back on the tax rolls, but they never were. And in the process, I learned some great history from Alderman O'Connor about some key figures that came out of Lincoln School. So we're never too old to learn something, Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you, kind sir. Any other? Alderman O'Connor?
Well, I got to jump in now. Thank you, Mr. Andrew. I was just pointing out that there's something about the circle of life and continuity here. I told them that a nineteen-year-old graduate, associate graduate of, of Normal Teachers College in, in Normal, Illinois, came to Lincoln School in nineteen thirty to teach, a physical education teacher. She was about five foot four. But my understanding was she controlled everybody just very well, just as much as she did her family. That was my mother came to Lincoln School. So there's a great, great feeling here that good things are going to result from this, this entire project. And, and my concerns, as I expressed in the finance committee, was simply that it did come on very fast. That if this is the long-term end of this, that it would have been more appropriate to try to pull things together with the transfer and with what the development agreement was going to be. But sometimes you ask for things and you get them just like you did because we've had a good bit of discussion in finance. We've had a good bit of discussion here tonight, giving you a sense of what is going to be involved. And fortunately, I think some really, really good information as to what's going to be accomplished. And I thank Mr. Alexandro and Mr. Devo for some very, very good explanations, very good facts in regard to how this is going to proceed. The only disappointment I have in Mr. Alexandro is when he linked up the fact that Lincoln School was eighteen sixty-two and maybe I was around then. And then he said that that was in excellent condition considering its age. I didn't hear me included in that. I think we could have just continued it at that point. But so I'm, I'm in favor of this. Let's, let's move it forward. We're looking forward and hopefully January, when we can get the full development information and we can have further discussion about this.
Any other questions or comments on this item? There being none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lochee?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Wildase.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Clerk, will you next, read the next item under new business?
Twenty dash zero eight six nine, a resolution authorizing execution of a rollover agreement between the City of Aurora and Local Ninety-Nine of the International Association of Firefighters.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, saying to Alderman Jenkins. Any questions or discussion based on this item, Alderman Messiakos?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Typically, I'd ask this question beforehand, but I just noticed something here and I just like a, I have no, no issues with the, with the resolution, but I just wanted to have an item clarified for me by staff on the last page. It was item seven. What is a Thames team?
Alderman, I'm sorry, Mr. Alexandra or Mr. Chief Krenitz, you want to answer that?
Yeah. Good evening, Alderman. Sorry, I'm confined in my house here. I have a lot of, my kids are downstairs being noisy. Thames medic is our tactical emergency medical medics that are assisting our PD when they do the SWAT team and stuff. They're there specifically to treat our wounded officers should our officers get hurt. They're trained side by side with those guys. This came out of an after action out of Pratt, out of our officers being injured. Now we're going to have medics on hand to treat and assist our police officers.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, Alderman Messiakos, based on that response?
No, that was, that was great. Appreciate Chief sharing that with us.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions or comments from the Alderman? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lochee?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Wildase.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Before we go on, I just want to thank Local Ninety-Nine, you know, for negotiating this rollover and, you know, during these tough times. We know that our, our, our frontline workers that work for us, especially our firemen, you know, they, they have been dealing with a lot over, you know, over this pandemic. And they recognize that, you know, the city has also been dealing with that and, and financial struggles. And because of it, they've, they've agreed to do a rollover, which means only talk about issues that involve salary and, and insurance. And, and agreed to a rollover that would benefit the city as, as much, as much as them. So they're looking out for the City of Aurora. So I appreciate those, those firemen and Local Ninety-Nine that stepped up and, and made sure that they did the right thing on behalf of me and still come to work every single day to make sure that we're protected during this, during this pandemic because they've had it, they've had it hard. And, you know, so I, you know, let's give them a round of applause for all the work they do, our firemen out there. Absolutely. And I want to thank Chief Krenitz and Alicia Lewis as well for participating in, in these negotiations and working with our fine, fine men and women, you know, on the fire front line that, that make sure that we can continue doing, doing good work here in the City of Aurora and we're protected. So thank you guys for all that you've done in this negotiation as well. Chief, you got some good guys there in Local Ninety-Nine. So let them know that we appreciate their hard work and, and sacrifice for the City of Aurora.
Will do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, kind. You're very welcome. Let's go on to Treasury Report. I acknowledge receipt of November twenty twenty Treasury Report. Are there any questions or discussion on the Treasurers' report from any of the members of the city council? There being none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. There being no need to take any action on the Treasury Report. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills listed on? There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second of Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on the bill?
Mr. Mayor, Marty does have a financial update in his, as part of his report.
For the Treasurers' report?
Yes, sir.
All right, let me, let me take this for the bills first. So there's been a motion, second on the bills, any question or discussion on the bills? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lochee?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Bills are approved. Mr. Alliance, you want to take it away and show us what you got, brother?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I know you've got a long agenda, so this is going to be the flash description of where we're at. It is, we are in stable shape, so I will do this quickly. And can everyone see the PowerPoint?
We see it says make it fast, make it easy and Zoom meeting, your schedule note. That's not the PowerPoint. So you got to make that a little bit larger. The PowerPoint's a thumbnail off in the corner, it looks like.
All right, hold on. We'll try again. Is that any better?
It, it's, it's normally where your face is at, brother. Maybe that's just, can everybody else see this PowerPoint?
That is really weird because I'm seeing it.
Yes, we can see.
Your, how your screen is set up.
All right. So everybody, as long as everybody else sees, that's all that matters.
Okay, really quick. We got the eleven million in cares. Fantastic job by the mayor's office, all that great work and, and also some of the finance team for getting all the backup and all of our people. We got a million dollars for Hesse House. One of the key things about this is we don't have all the details, but we are getting extended to March thirty-first. So for Hesse, that means we ought to be able to spend money the right way as much as possible without trying to rush through by the end of the year. We are working on getting a lot of things done for Hesse, but we may have a little bit more time to do it. Funny thing happened in September. Our sales tax was higher than twenty nineteen. Go figure that one. So three percent higher than twenty nineteen. That was when we were still open. Income taxes stable, property tax came in at one hundred percent for the year. All these things could change for next year as we run into the hangover. But right now our revenues in these areas did better than expected. As noted in the Treasurers' report, our operating reserve is favorable compared to last year. At the same time, cash balance is fifteen million higher than last year. But as I, I will note at the end, there are lots of reason to proceed cautiously. So this is the graph that I always show that shows us starting off back in April, March, at the beginning of COVID. And here's where we're at now, where we will have a forty-seven million dollar cash balance at the end of November with very little revenue coming in in December. That's a lean month for us. The December sales tax doesn't show up until March the next year. So, but that is a, a good sign for stability. And I'll get to some of the things that we want to talk about. I just referenced everything else, sales tax, property tax, building permits, expenses. We've managed to keep expenses nine percent below budget with no furloughs and no layoffs. I think if you take a look at the various report that's in the Treasurers' report, police and fire are at one hundred percent of their budget year-to-date. All the other departments are way under budget so that we can make sure our first responders were able to act appropriately during the pandemic. So I encourage everyone to take a look at the year-to-date variance report to see how the other departments managed. So we are still in phase three. We're getting better. But one of the things I do want to call out, and it's been being called out more often, and that is, is that overdue rent mortgage payments will be coming due in twenty twenty-one. The new stimulus package could provide a great amount of revenue to cities if we are, if we are deemed a primary recipient to help with this issue in twenty twenty-one. And we're just learning a little bit more about it right now. So I do see our revenues next year continuing to be flat. And of course, next year, income tax will take the big hit. But as you know, with the extension of some of the benefits into twenty twenty-one, that means our income tax will take a hit into twenty twenty-two when we actually receive funds from income taxes. So this will stretch out a little bit longer than twenty twenty-one as far as revenues are concerned. So I've talked about the positivity issues. We are, we haven't seen how low our sales taxes will go with November and December being closed up. But I'm, you know, not overly pessimistic. Ten, fifteen percent down is what we saw before when we were closed up. So that's a, what we hopefully will be at for the November, December and January. We will give a final update in January, once we complete the, the cash basis reporting. So for the first meeting in January, I hope to be able to come out with a report as well. We are seeking more funds. The new stimulus package doesn't have anything for city government, so that's something to be concerned about. We aren't issuing any debt other than the debt for Copley Hospital that- We aren't issuing any debt other than the debt for Copley Hospital that will be coming due in January. We'll bring that forward to the city council during January. We're going to hold the line on new hires. We're still looking at keeping our decision packages, as you know, from the budget process. We had very few that were even being approved. So we will monitor those as we go into twenty twenty-one. I'm meeting tomorrow with Public Works folks to just have a look at the, our capital plan. It's been a very interesting thing in that we got, we had great news when we were wide open. Then we got closed back in. Now we're opening back up. It's difficult to project long term. So we are just meeting with our Public Works folks. We just approved some bids to go out right away for water and sewer activities, but we are looking at everything closely before we send them out. We, we do want to get bids out early if we can, because we'll get better pricing if we do. The last thing I would talk about is the mayor's office, finance and economic development are all looking at remediation efforts to try and help our businesses and, and also residents through the utilization of some of our own funds. And that was some contingency planning, not hearing anything on a remediation slash stimulus package. We will continue with that and should have something in January for discussion. And that's it. I just want to, you know, this isn't the year-end report. Everyone else is at year-end. I gotta wait until January to get my year-end numbers. But we are in a stable spot. We won't get much revenue in till the end of the year. But thanks to all of the departments running about. They are nine percent below budget. That's twenty million dollars below budget on their expenses. So thanks to all of them, without the CARES Act funding, we would be running in a deficit. And that's the report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, kind sir. Can you close out for me? Questions or Alder, questions or comments from our Alderman? Questions, comments, Alderman O'Connor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as, as we've done many times before, appreciation to Mr. Lyons for all of the, the information that he's given us in a, in a, obviously extremely difficult year. It's, it's very good to keep to track of everything. And I appreciate all that information that, that has been given. And that reflects upon, and, and this is our last meeting of the year, obviously, I'll take the opportunity at this point to say again, appreciation to, starting with the mayor, starting with every department, starting with all the city employees for how we have gotten through twenty twenty, horrendous year. We're, we're not in, in the position that we say we're in great shape, but we are so, I mean, much better than I think anybody expected in regard to how we've done our business, how we've conducted ourselves and continue the, the tremendous services to the citizens of the city of Aurora. So appreciation. You know, on behalf of, of the council, obviously, for everything that has been done in order to get us to the end of twenty twenty. And no pun, well, pun intended, we've zoomed through the year. We're going to still be zooming twenty twenty-one, but we're obviously hoping for a much, much better year in twenty twenty-one in so many different ways. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Alderman O'Connor. You know, I mean, I just want to follow up on and repeat something Alderman O'Connor said. I think it's important, important to note. And this is a credit to Mr. Lyons, his team and Alexander, Alexandra and, and everybody that worked so hard. The fact that we're in a stable, not a good financial position, not a bad financial position, financial position, but a stable financial position is not by chance. It's not by accident. It's because of the hard work of, of the men and women throughout our city who, you know, are experiencing a decrement, a reduction in, in their, in their departments and recognizing they don't have, you know, the resources they normally would have to provide the services to our constituents, to our residents that, that our residents have come to, to, to deserve and, you know, and to, to, to look at something that, you know, they deserve. It's because our people have worked hard to make sure that, you know, we will do what's necessary to make sure that we still hold Aurora up to the highest level as possible, even if we've got to work harder. You know, and, and we do because we know we've had a, a freeze on hiring, you know, since March. And we've had a number of retirements, a number of, of, you know, positions not filled that weren't filled before, but we still are providing that same level of excellent service to our constituents here in Aurora. It's not by accident. It's because we have a strong working staff and executives with a strong work ethic that makes sure Aurora still runs. So, you know, when, when we talk about, you know, a city and its financial position, know that we are in ours, stable and still be able to look at twenty twenty-one with, with a whole lot of hope. It's because, you know, Marty Lyons, Alex, Alexandra, all our executives, Alicia Lewis, you know, all of our people, chief of police, chief of fire, every chief that we've got here have made it happen. They made it happen for all of us. And you, the city council, you know, have recognized that and voted on a strong budget that leads us into twenty twenty-one, you know, standing strong here in the city of Aurora. This is our last meeting in twenty twenty, you all. We've gone through a lot together this year. Gone through a lot together this year, you know, and, and it was very uncertain. You know, and, and very many points of how we would be able to continue on and, and, you know, and run the city and can, and continue the business, you know, for our residents that they come to expect, but we have all done it together. Working together, recognizing the sacrifice that we had to make together. You know, recognizing the changes that we had to make together, stepping up in this pandemic and these uncertain circumstances together. So as we end twenty twenty, I want to say to you all, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays. And let us look forward to a happy twenty twenty-one because we got to get the heck up out of twenty twenty. Go to a new year where let's, let's come together some more and do it right. You know, this pandemic is going to be over. We got these, we got, you know, these vaccines that are, you know, already being distributed throughout our country. So we're hearing from our experts that by the fall, we'll all be, you know, in football stadiums full of thousands of people again, you know. Aurora is going to be standing ready right there to accept all the, you know, you know, all the success that we've got coming to us because we've built the foundation. And even though we might be a little bit behind because of this COVID, no, every city throughout this country is, we have set a foundation to build on that is going to make us even stronger than we were projected to be before this happened. And that is because of you folks on the screen. That is because of our, you know, over twelve hundred city employees. That is because of the, our work ethic and our strength. So when people say Aurora strong, it means a whole lot more than I think we all imagine. We say those words. That's something in our heart. So as we go into the holiday season, you know, we don't see each other for the next couple, next couple of weeks. Let me just say, I look forward to seeing you in the new year. And I look forward to continuing the good work that we do here in the city of Aurora. Thank you very much. And I won't be the, I won't be, I won't be the last word. I'll see if any other Alderman before we close out because we don't have any other business to come before city council. Anybody have anything else to say? Alderman Smith?
Just very merry, merry, whatever you celebrate. Merry Christmas to all of you. And I do look forward to the day that we can all sit in our seats on the third floor again. So hopefully that will be closer than we have been and since last March.
That day is coming, Patty Smith. Absolutely. With no further business.
Happy holiday to all.
Alderman Hartburns, happy holidays, yeah. With no further business coming for the city council, no other Alderman?
Motion adjourned.
We got a motion to adjourn by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Loft. Madam clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Well, days.
Motion carries, means adjourned. Be safe all.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holiday.